Good evening. The March 13th meeting of the Longview City Council is now called to order. Mayor Christian Ishihara is unable to join us this evening, so I'm Mayor Pro Tem and District Five Councilwoman Michelle Gamboa, and it is my honor and privilege to chair tonight's meeting. For the invocation, tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Mike Rapazzo, owner of Turfscapes. Mike and his company have been active volunteers with Connect Longview, which seeks to improve neighborhoods by matching local volunteers with homeowners who need assistance with property repairs. Thank you for being here, Mr. Rapazzo. If everyone will please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, thank you for this beautiful weather that you've given us. Thank you for the glimpses of spring that we're starting to see and just the birds and the flowers announcing that it's spring. Thank you for all the men and women here tonight that have given of their time, their resources, valuable time to be here to serve our community. Thank you for that. Lord, I pray that the words and actions taken tonight will be honoring to you and honoring to each other. Pray that you'll give us the grace each day to walk into merit that's worthy of the gospel, which is you send your son to die for us on the cross. In his name I pray, amen. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible for liberty and justice for all.
We're moving on to presentation. Tonight, a presentation of a proclamation recognizing March 13th as Brain Injury Awareness Day. Tonight, we're proud to present a proclamation recognizing March 13th as Brain Injury Awareness Day. Will Ms. Paige Woodfin and with the Northeast Texas Brain Injury Support Group, along with members of the Longview Pilot Club and the First Lutheran Church, please join me up here on the stage. Up there on the stage? Yes. Thank y'all for your work. So everybody, come on up to the stage. Perfect. We'll move you right here so that we can see you so I don't block you. Perfect. Everyone assembled? Perfect. And we'll all get a little closer so we can all be in this picture because you all do so much. We just want to make sure that you're all in here. So Brain Injury Awareness Day is today, March 13th, 2025. Whereas the Northeast Texas Brain Injury Support Group, the Longview Pilot Club, and the First Lutheran Church have requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize March 13th, 2025, oh, coming up here, I think we have one more. Oh, no, okay, as Brain Injury Awareness Day in the city of Longview. And whereas Brain Injury Awareness Month is observed annually in March, it's a time to raise awareness about brain injuries, their causes, effects, and prevention strategies. Brain injuries are a significant public health concern affecting millions of people worldwide. By raising awareness, Brain Injury Awareness aims to reduce the incidence of brain injuries, improve care for survivors, and promote their well-being. The Northeast Texas Brain Injury Support Group meets at the First Lutheran Church every month on the second Tuesday with speakers and fellowship for survivors of brain injury. And now therefore I, as Mayor Pro Tem, on behalf of the mayor proclaim March 13th, 2025, as Brain Injury Awareness Day in the city of Longview. If everyone will please give them a hand for their hard work.
Okay. Thank you for having us and thank you for this proclamation. We're so proud to be able to raise awareness about brain injury. Five million Americans live with a disability, living today with disability related, related to traumatic brain injury. I'm Paige Woodfin. I'm one of the co-facilitators of this group, the Northeast Texas Brain Injury Support Group. And this is Brain Injury Awareness Month, and today in Longview is Brain Injury Awareness Day. This group was started by concerned Pilot Club members, some that had brain injuries, some that are just interested in brain injury recovery. And so it started about two years ago. And this Pilot Club is a service organization that provides programs for prevention of brain injury, brain injury health, and brain-related disorders. The Pilot Club of Longview supports the support, sponsors the support group. And as you said, we meet the second Tuesday of each month, six o'clock at the First Lutheran Church. We provide support, education, and resources. So we have speakers come in that have expertise in neurological injuries or they can just offer us resources. And that's really been awesome, but also the relationships we've built. The brain injury survivors in our group are our heroes. They're living every day with challenges that are often hidden disabilities, and we're so proud of them and so proud to be a part of their recovery. Our group includes brain injury survivors, caregivers, and volunteers, and we really want to welcome anyone in the Northeast Texas area to join us, to come to our meetings and to share with us and get support. And we have some brochures today here that have our contact information. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We can all give it one more round of applause. We have another proclamation, presenting a proclamation recognizing March 25th as Development Disability Awareness Day. We have the opportunity to highlight this day by Olu Motoni representing Community Health Corps with AgriLife and TCDD. If you would please join us on stage.
How are you, Ms. Motoni? Good to be here. Thank you for being here. And I'm going to let you say a few words after our proclamation, okay?
Oh, perfect. Thank y'all for being here.
Hi, how are you? Oh, perfect. Thank you so much for being here. Oh, sorry. Thank y'all for being here. Are we, do y'all have anybody else?
No, we're it.
Okay, perfect.
So Developmental Disability Awareness Day is March 25th, 2025. Whereas the Community Health Corps with AgriLife and TCDD has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize March 25th as Development Disability Awareness Day in the city of Longview. And whereas an estimated 600,000 individuals in Texas have developmental disabilities yet have the same hopes and dreams we all cherish as Texans, to be self-sufficient, to find fulfilling work, to practice one's faith, and to make a difference. The city of Longview dedicates March 25th to shed light on people with developmental disabilities, their families, and their care providers in every aspect of life. During this observance and hereafter, Texans can learn about how classrooms, workplaces, houses of worship, and communities are stronger when everyone participates. And now therefore I, as Mayor Pro Tem, on behalf of the mayor proclaim March 25th, 2025, as Developmental Disability Awareness Day in the city of Longview. If everyone will please give them a hand for their hard work. And we're going to let you say a few words, and this is actually very special to me because my sister has cerebral palsy, and she's blind and deaf, and so today was a great day to honor people like her and the people who take care of her. So thank y'all so much.
First of all, we would like to thank the city of Longview for actually doing this proclamation for us. March 25th, we are going to have an event from five to seven in the evening at Mott Cobb. We serve in the East Texas area over 2,000 individuals with developmental disabilities. The group that came before us, we also work with them, individuals who have had brain injuries. You may know someone who actually has a disability. I have a sister who has ADD. That's an intellectual developmental disability. And let me tell you this, they want the same things as you and I. Many of them are married, they have children, they go to work. This month, this entire month, is Developmental Disability Awareness Month. But it's every day that we should be aware of those who may look a little different, who may talk a little different, who may walk a little different, but I assure you, they're just the same as you and I. And again, thank you for this beautiful proclamation. And I just want to thank everyone here in Longview. You're always so kind. We have different events throughout the city. I also want to thank the businesses here in Longview. Many of them have volunteered to help us with that event. We live in a great community. Disability awareness is about community, that we are all the same. God expects for us to treat each other with respect. God expects for us to treat each other just like we are our brother's keeper. And when it comes to individuals with developmental disabilities, they're, they come in all shapes, sizes, male, female, black, white. Some of their disabilities is physical, a lot of it could be mental, some of it, you may not even recognize that the person has a disability. But just know this, if you treat everybody the same way with respect and with love, it won't matter whether they have a disability or not. Again, thank you.
Thank y'all. Can we give him another round? Thank y'all so much. So tonight, we're also starting something new. Each council meeting, we will be recognizing one of our partner agencies with the Greater Longview Optimal Wellness Program. District One Councilman Derek Conley will present tonight's partner agency, Wellness Point.
Thank you, Ms. Gamboa. Like the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, we're kicking off something special today. For the next few city council meetings, we will be recognizing the great, our great community partners that participate in the Greater Longview Optimal Wellness Program, or how it's commonly known as GLO. GLO is a program designed to improve the health and wellness of residents in the greater Longview area and surrounding communities by assisting high users of the community's emergency services to either call 911 or self-report to emergency departments rather than accessing more appropriate areas of assistance. Through the partnerships formed as a part of GLO, these residents are directed to resources to meet their needs. As a customer patient of this very effective and efficient organization, it's my honor to welcome and recognize our first partner organization, Wellness Point. Wellness Point CEO Chad Jones is here, will give us a short presentation about the organization, the many ways it serves the community. This one's special to me, as Wellness Point has partnered with Pine Tree ISD to offer health and psychological services at the Pine Tree High School campus. Like I mentioned, very effective and efficient office. Appreciate the staff there. And Mr. Jones, through this program, students are able to be seen at a clinic with the caretaker's permission. Mr. Jones, thank you for being here.
Oh, thank y'all for having me. As Mr. Conley said, my name is Chad Jones. I'm the CEO at Wellness Point. Wellness Point operates under a few clinic lines across East Texas in our service areas. First with Wellness Point in Longview Gilmer and Kilgore. We also have the Women's Health Center Clinics in Longview and Tyler and Northeast Texas Health Clinics in Mount Pleasant. Wellness Point is a nonprofit organization established in 1997 by Dr. John Kirk to focus on healthcare needs of low-income women, and we became a federally qualified health center in 2007. In 2024, you'll see, we took care of a little over 35,000 patients, with over 12,000 of those patients originating from Longview. Based on current census estimates, that puts us taking care of approximately 15% of Longview residents last year. So I mentioned we're a federally qualified health center in FQHC, so just a little bit about FQHCs. There are currently 1,363 FQHCs in the United States, with 77 in Texas that are FQHCs or FQHC look-alikes. We are community-based nonprofit organizations, partially grant-funded through the Public Health Services Act. We are governed by a volunteer board of directors that either live or work in our service area, and a majority of our board members are people who utilize and receive our services. There's a number of different federal grant requirements we're required to honor in being an FQHC, things like required services of family medicine, OB-GYN, pediatrics, dentistry, and mental health, offering a sliding fee discount, and board composition requirements. So looking a little bit at where we're located, you'll see up there the list of where we are across East Texas, focusing in on Longview, we have seven public-facing clinics in Longview, as well as two social services sites. That number includes our public school-based clinic at Pine Tree ISD. In total, there's eight clinics because Longview ISD does have a clinic there, but it is a closed-door clinic that is staff and students only. The areas, just for fun, there are areas out there. So you look at Marshall Lights Up, Henderson Lights Up, Carthage Lights Up a little bit. Those are lighting up because those are partnerships we have with neighboring FQHCs that provide prenatal services, but they send us their patients for delivery here in Longview. The other piece that typically comes in from the outlying areas are in seeking our mental health services. So zooming in a little bit more to Longview and where our patients originate from and where our clinics are, the seven public-facing clinics are at 1107 East Marshall Avenue, which is near Highway 80 and Alpine Road, 425 North Redon you, across from First United Methodist, 1,001 West Fairmont and Pine Tree High School, 1761 West Loop 281, which is the corner of the Loop and Gilmer Road, 2131 South Mobley across from Letourneau University, 705 East Marshall across from Good Shepherd, and 802 Medical Circle next to Longview Regional. There are areas, I stopped in zooming in and kind of left this zoomed out, but there are areas of our town that if you zoom in, you'll find that on any given street, we take care of eight or nine out of every 10 households. So what do we do looking at our clinical services? We have two different branches of our company, the clinical and the social services side. Within clinical, obstetrics and gynecology, pediatrics, family medicine, mental health counseling, and substance use disorder counseling, psychology, psychiatry, family dentistry, and optometry and optical. We were the third FQHC in Texas and the 10th in the country to bring optometry into the community health center setting. Mental health is currently our fastest-growing service line in terms of provider recruitment and is a major focus for our school-based clinics to ensure that our youth have access to those mental health services. I told you, we started off with a focus on low-income women, and true to our legacy, OB-GYN is still the largest component of our service line, making up over half of what we do. From a total patient perspective, we said it's the 10th largest health center in Texas. However, from a prenatal perspective, we are the second-largest health center in Texas and the eighth-largest in the United States. Focusing in on Longview, looking at the babies born here last year in 2024, there were 3,683 total births. We delivered 41% of those babies in the Longview hospitals. Jumping over to social services, you see we offer a wide range of social services. I won't go through each one of them, but I will tell you, they do focus in on familial relationships, parenting skills, drug abuse prevention, and WIC. So then, what is our GLO integration? There's a significant amount of overlap between the patients that we take care of and those patients that are high utilizers of services that are targeted by GLO for that enhanced amount of service. So our participation includes myself serving on the board for GLO, on the steering committee. I have my chief operations and compliance officer, as well as my director of operations. The GLO staff have direct lines into our largest family medicine clinic, which is the primary place that we would serve GLO patients, as well as participating in the Pulsara communication platform that the city utilizes. On that platform, anytime there's a message that is coming to us, it's going to three different people, the care coordinator in our largest family medicine clinic, our director of operations, and our chief operations and compliance officer. So it ensures that when GLO needs something, they've got support from the top down in our agency. We assist with appointment availability as well as care coordination. In terms of making healthcare affordable, not just for GLO patients, but all the patients we serve, we accept most major forms of coverage, including Medicaid chip, Medicare, Tricare, and insurance. We also have a state outstation worker on-site in one of our clinics, which gives our patients priority access to Medicaid enrollment. We offer a sliding fee discount to patients up to 200% of poverty level, numerous grants that help to fund the cost of care, and then to additional prescription drug programs, our PAP RX program, which is our staff who works full-time with patients in submitting applications for no-cost medications provided direct from the manufacturers, as well as a 340B retail pharmacy program that extends across East Texas that gives patients access to medications at the manufacturer's cost of production. I was cold to keep it short and sweet, so that's what I got for you, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Mr. Newstad?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I have two questions. The Longview ISD, you said campus was closed. Is there, is that just based on where it's located, or?
Yeah, so that particular clinic is internal to the school, so it creates a little bit of a safety issue if you make that a completely public-facing clinic. It's a little bit different than our opportunity at Pine Tree ISD, where our clinic sits on the school ground, so it qualifies as a school-based clinic, but it sits outside the security gate, so that clinic is open to the public.
Awesome. And then the federal poverty level?
Yes.
Do you know what that is in Longview?
Well, the federal poverty level is applicable across the board. It's going to be right around $14,000 for a single individual and about $4,000 per every individual in the family after that. I don't have the exact numbers on me, but that'll be close.
But let's just say $28,000, then would get most people covered at Wellness Point?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
Just like to comment, I appreciate Mr. Jones and this information, and he mentioned that the Pine Tree Clinic's open, and not at the risk of having more traffic in there for when I have a sickness, but very good, they do a great job, and appreciate all you do for the community, Mr. Jones, and what Wellness Point does. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you so much, Mr. Jones, Wellness Point, and your entire team for your invaluable work, as well as our various community partners. I'd also like to take this moment to highlight Chief Amy Hooton, who is retired, but was instrumental in the creation of this program. So thank you, guys, if we could give all these people a round of applause. We are now to citizen comment. I do have a speaker card. If Ms. Shnitra Shaw would please make it up to the podium. You have three minutes to address the city council, and please state your name, address for the record before beginning your comments.
Good afternoon. Thank you, city of council. I am Shnitra Shaw, address 909 Joanie Street, Longview, Texas, 75605. I am a resident in District Five. However, today I am here to ask a status for Stamper Park. I do have family members, as well as my mom, who is with me here today that lives in that district, so today we're here to just find out a status.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your questions. We actually don't respond from the podium, but Mr. Albertson, if you'll raise your hand, you can get with him right there, and he can give you a status on that.
Awesome.
Thank you for being here and participating in the process.
Thank you so very much.
We are now to our consent agenda. Is there any items that the city council would like to pull off for a separate discussion? We have one more? Oh, one more. Mr. Eddie, welcome. If you'll please state your name, address.
Good evening. G. Floyd is the name, 2109 Southeast Monroe. Because this applies to all of us here currently, I need to tell you, this PA system does not work very well. It appeared that, okay, he said thank you. It does not work very well. Part of the problem, too, is as council members, when you're speaking, you don't lean into the mic or turn it on, and we can't hear you. So what we're hearing is a distortion or reverberation of your voice, but not actually hearing your voice. And just like I said, people cannot hear you, and I don't think you realize that. The public microphone like here is not working properly either because it's so low. And I work a little bit in audio visual, so that's why I'm telling you these things, too. So we need to mic it at just right so that we can actually hear. When presenters come to the podium like they have now, I recommend that you use to put them a lapel on, so as they move around and the voice like, it doesn't go in and out. And that way, we can actually hear their voice, and then it's consistent while they're making a presentation. Council members don't always, again, say, lean forward to speaking to the microphones, or remember to turn it on. I don't know if you turn it on or not, but sometimes it's just we cannot hear you at all. So we just want to simply clearly hear what you're saying during the discussion, because some of you move around and you lean back and they just can't hear you. But I don't think you, again, are aware of that. And unfortunately, for some of you, your voices are monotonous. There are no points of inflection where it goes up and down, which triggers the hearing. And so, and that's not a criticism either, but just the fact that you, and some of you are soft-spoken. Well, soft-spoken people are nice, but we can't hear you. And we want to hear what you say so that we can understand the discussions also. This is a small room, and, but we'd just like to hear a big-room sound, because the sound should actually come through those speakers, but it's not. So we can only hear your voice from there, and by the time it gets here, it's distorted, and it's a reverberation. Normal speech patterns and voice projections and voice volumes need to be appropriately amplified by the system. That's the whole point of having it. But if you're not speaking into the mic or you move around, we can't hear you, and so we don't understand clearly what you're saying. Everybody is not articulate of speech that you don't syllabicate very good, but anyway, we still want to hear what you say, and that way we can make sense of what you're saying. All right, G. Floyd, thank you.
All right, G. Floyd.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
Can you hear me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, G. Floyd.
And then we do have one.
Great syllabicating, sir.
Great job.
All right, thank you. We do have one more citizen comment card.
Are you speaking as, or standing in as mayor today?
I am. I am the mayor pro tem, and so I will be leading today's meeting. And Mr. Smith, if you will please state your name, address for the record before beginning your comments.
Madam Mayor, my name is John T. Smith the Fourth. I reside at 101 Falcon Way, Longview, Texas, coincidentally in your district, District Five. Was there something else?
No, sir, we don't respond from the dais. You just have three minutes to tell us whatever your.
Thank you. I'm here today as a resident of your district. I'd reached out to you a couple of weeks ago and left a voicemail message regarding two concerns. I've been at 101 Falcon Way as a resident for about 12 years. I called and left a very specific message with respect to a political sign that was posted that was obstructing visibility as you turned off of the street onto Gilmer Road. That political sign had been there for weeks. That political sign had been there for weeks, and it was kind of confusing, because I know that there's no current election going on, that the sign should have been there. So I was wondering, what was the proper protocol for that sort of situation? On the voicemail that I left for you, Madam Mayor, I inquired, I believe, whether or not it was appropriate for me to take the sign up and return it to the person who happens to be a neighbor, or to send it through CitySend, or what have you. I just didn't know. But the sign had been there for weeks. Of another concern about that particular intersection, I had spoken about a month ago to a couple of police officers about a concern where oncoming traffic on Gilmer Road coming in both directions would turn in a lane that created a lot of confusion. And after about a 45-minute conversation with those officers, I was seeking clarity on, at what point am I in the right-of-way to enter into those lanes to turn back onto the Falcon Way? And they had no solutions. It's an odd sort of intersection, only in that the turning from the left, or the turning from the right, where two cars are oncoming, blocks visibility and makes it virtually impossible to make a safe turn. There's no intersection that, I mean, there's no proper intersection that could place a stoplight there, because the streets that we're turning off of, off of Gilmer Road on the Falcon Way and the other street, they're not evenly matched. And so I was wondering what solutions might be possible, short of a city light. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. Mr. Chumley, will you mind giving him your card in regards to the right-of-way and some of those sign postings? And we'll get back in touch with you. Thank you for being here. We are now to our consent agenda. Is there any item that the city council would like to pull off for separate discussion? I just have a question on E. from Mr. Albertson.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Albertson. I know we had discussed the resurfacing of the Spring Hill Playground, and this is going to be different material than the one currently used, correct?
This will actually be the same material. What we'll do is, we're actually going over the top of it, just to be able to add more soft surface, for fall risk. So we're just really improving it and going on top of it with a different material, so.
Okay, so we'll be filling in the holes and then going on top of it? Okay, perfect.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
In a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda passes. We are now on to zoning items. We'll move on to zoning items. City Planner Angela Choi will present the items. Ms. Choi?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, and Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a rezone of this property located at 1600 Alpine Road, from Single Family 4 to Town Home Zoning District. The applicant is proposing to build townhomes on this lot. As you can see across the street where the Old Valley View School was, that property was rezoned in 2023, from Single Family to Town Home Zoning as well. Alpine Road is classified as a minor arterial roadway and is maintained by text dot. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway, as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This item does require public hearing, which I will open at this time. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Choi? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're now on to public hearing B.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone of this property seen here on the zoning map, from Agricultural Zoning District to Single Family 4 Zoning District, located at 529 Harley Ridge Road. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this property for another single-family dwelling. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This item does require public hearing, which I will open at this time. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Choi? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public B hearing passes. Onto number C.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property located along Bill Stout Parkway, south of Greystone Road, from Agricultural, seen on this map, to Single Family 4 Zoning District. The applicant is proposing to build a single-family subdivision at this location. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This item does require public hearing, which I will open at this time. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Choi? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item C passes. Onto item D.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property seen here on the zoning map, from Office Zoning District to Neighborhood Services Zoning District, located at 1,000 Peggy's Place. Currently, a spa and salon, they are located at this property and are not zoned correctly. In order to correct this, the applicant is requesting to rezone this property to bring it into compliance with zoning. This property is, Peggy's Place, is classified as a local street and is maintained by the City of Longview. Access management is essential to avoid traffic congestion and delays caused by turning movements. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This item does require public hearing, which I will open at this time. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Choi? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item D passes. Thank y'all. Moving on to action items. And finally, tonight, we will consider a resolution awarding a $7.6 million contract for their real road widening project funded by our 2018 bond election. Please note that Director of Public Works, Dwayne Archer, is unable to be with us this evening, so this item will be presented by City Engineer Kevin Chumley.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, Gamboa, city council members, and Raul McPhee. It is my pleasure to present to you the consideration for real road widening. This project is part of the 2019 Proposition for Infrastructure Improvements. It is one of the two remaining projects that we have left in our street improvements projects. And I want to give you a little background where we come to get to this point, because obviously, it's taken some time to get preparation for the road. One of the items was that we had to relocate the water and sewer utilities. This took some time. There was about 4,000 feet of water and sewer that was installed. Also, we coordinated with the franchise utilities, and that included SWEPCO, it included Atmos, and other fiber entities. Then, as well as, we acquired a lot of right-of-way from the residents in that area. There was about 47 properties that we went after and seeked property, and we did not have to do an acquisition on those, so that was good. Like I said, this project includes the widening of real road. We're going from a two-lane asphalt road to a four-lane concrete street. There will be a significant number of drainage improvements in that area, and also, we're installing a 10-foot-wide sidewalk along that for pedestrian traffic. And so, we opened bids on February 27th. The low bid was East Texas Bridge of Longview, Texas, for $7.597 million. We had two other bidders on that that were $8.4 and $8.6 million. And then, I'd like to mention that the $7.597 that's in front of you to approve is within the revised budget that was presented to you in the retreat in January. So with that, I'll open for any questions.
I will open it up for discussion for our council members. Mrs. Moore, Councilwoman Moore?
So is this part of the 2018 bond project, or the 2019?
Yes, it's part of the 2018 bond package. Yes, ma'am.
So I guess, in the retreat, like you mentioned, the numbers that we got, it was budgeted at $7.1, and now we're at $7.5, but then it was also projected at $9 million. And so, it's like a big jump in those numbers, so I'm trying to see how we got it down, because that's awesome. I mean, for y'all to project it at $9, it'd be a shortfall, and y'all projected at $9 million, and it's only $400,000 short. And it was originally expected to be $2.1 million short.
So I will tell you, if you'll allow me to answer that, Kevin, sorry.
Thank you.
The number that we gave was total in all propositions at the 5.4 for all propositions, right? There was a 5.4 gap during the retreat. Right now, with this award, we're at 5.35, if our estimates are correct. So money shifts around from some to the others in how they're presented, but the overall bond package, when we look at it collectively, because there's a shortage across a number of different propositions due to the cost increases, this is within that 5.4 million that I said was our gap in the budgeted, in the budget retreat.
Okay, but like I said, it went from, in the retreat, it went from what y'all expected was $7.1, what y'all budgeted for, and then the expenditures were expected to be $9.2 million.
Is that total project cost on that?
Yes, sir.
And so, that total project costs include some utility costs that were paid from other funds, not the bond funds. It includes the right-of-way costs, not just the construction cost, and it includes the engineering costs as well. So they're not 100% of those funds. Some of those funds came from utility funds, can't be paid for with general fund bond monies. So I would say we're still, we're still pretty high over in that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Conley?
Yes, Mr. Chumley. I know this project, Mr. Floyd, I'm thinking about you right now. Mr. Chumley, with this, obviously, extensive project in my district, I know the completion of it will be, it'll be a nice area to travel, but right now, there's an inconvenience. Can you kind of give an estimate to my constituents, how much time it's going to take to complete this project?
Yes, sir, that's a good question. So, you know, we're looking at starting probably in the summer of this year. So the project has a timeline, about 13 to 14 months. There will be some impact to traffic. We're looking at probably closing one lane, making it one-way for some period. And we will do our best to work with the contractor when we get them on board to minimize all that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other council members like to discuss? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Action item passes. I would also like to make a motion to approve Mayor Shahar's absence. I'll now entertain a-
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now to items of community interest. Councilman Conley?
March 22nd, 10:00 a.m. Very excited for Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center, in partnership with Longview Paws. It's going to be a great day. Strut your mutt, one-mile wag walk. Hopefully, I can bring Little Rocky out there, and he can strut around, so.
Little Rocky.
Appreciate these, appreciate both what Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center does, and Longview Paws, and hopefully, you guys can participate in that awesome fundraiser. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, so we are continuing to accept applications for our boards and commissions through Monday, March 31st. You are welcome to apply for any boards or commissions, but we have a specific need for new members in our Public Transportation Advisory Committee, Longview Housing Authority Advisory Commission, and the Senior Advisory Committee. To learn more and apply today at longviewtexas.gov/boards. Live here, serve here. Next, we have, on April 12th, we're going to do our first Extravaganza, and this event was brought to me by Shania Poke and Devatrick Dottry, and so they kind of tag teamed and asked me to assist with that. So we're going to have a fun day, April 12th. We're going to impose on Broad and Rec, at Broad and Recreation, if you don't mind, Ray. And thanks to John and his team for helping us with this project. So see you April 12th.
Councilman Ray Wade?
Yes, ma'am. You're more than welcome. At Broad and Recreation Center. You, too, Conley.
Yes, sir.
All right. Join the City of Longview and Longview ISD for Longview Moves, every Thursday at 6:00 p.m., beginning March 20th. Residents are encouraged to meet at the Most Wonderful Broad and Recreation Center, and walk, run, or bike along Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard as a community. All ages are welcome, and that will start on March 20th, and it will be every Thursday from there on. You all are welcome. That's it, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Newstad?
As I didn't provide a slide, but I do want to say thank you to Director Albertson and the Parks and Rec team. We had the kite festival, was it yesterday, I guess? And my kids had a blast, we were there, and it was packed. I mean, I remember, last time, I got there when it opened, and it was like, you know, people were starting to come in. This place, the parking lot, was full already. And so, the word's getting out that it's a fun event, so I want to say thank you for y'all, all that y'all did to promote that event and the good work you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pertle?
Nothing for me.
Okay. And I do have some things for the city manager before I go on to my items.
So, as I believe in our prayer, we mentioned that we're thankful that spring is here. For those of you that know me, you know how I love springtime, because it brings back two of my favorite events. One is Downtown Live, and that happens every Friday evening in April and May, and that's at Heritage Plaza. It's a free event. It's a great time to get together as a community and just have fun together and visit. Music in the Gardens, it's the 10th anniversary of Music in the Gardens with our partners at Longview Arboretum. And I encourage everyone to go out to there, because there you get to see, hear some great music in a beautiful setting, and the tickets for that are $10, and helps support this community's great arboretum. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPhee. And I heard that the city council might have their own band, and that, Mr. Conley, you might be playing the electric guitar. Is that true?
Whatever it takes.
All right, perfect. So, before I go into my items, just a couple of things. If you do want to make a difference, boards and commissions are very important. We need you to step up and serve on those commissions, as well as, there is lots of roadwork going on in District 5. It is pothole season, so we please ask that you report those on CitySend, but I'm always available to you as well. Thank you for everyone who's been reaching out all week. We've been able to address issues in various neighborhoods and major thoroughfares, so thank you so much to Public Works and our entire team for keeping all of our cities so beautiful. Pay Your Way, UBS change. You now have more options to pay your City of Longview utility bill, water, sewer, and sanitation. You can visit longviewtexas.gov/billpay today to register, or slash, sorry, today to register a profile and pay with your utility access, our new online payment portal. Sanity Savers, The Elder Care Journey. Mark your calendars for Tuesday, April 1st, and make plans to join us for the Sanity Savers, The Elder Care Journey. This free event helps connect residents with resources to care for an elderly parent or loved one. It will also include a keynote presentation from Suzanne Esoph Blankenship, the author of How to Take Care of Old People Without Losing Your Marbles. Learn more at longviewtexas.gov-sanitysavers. Love Longview is coming up, so we need you, April 5th. Keep Longview Beautiful's annual Love Longview Day of serving is coming up, April 5th.